Okay.
Hey. Okay, good evening Mahopac schools community. December 21st, 2020, our public, our December public meeting. We welcome everyone this evening and thanks for joining us. So we've had, sorry about the late start. We've had some connectivity issues seemingly surround the surrounding the our area. But like they've been worked out, have gotten to where they need to get connection. So we're, we're going to proceed on. So what I'd like right now is a motion to open our meeting for this evening.
So move.
Thank you, Larry, in a second please.
Second.
Thank you, Ben, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Or would you please join me in standing? I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Just really quick, please, just that yeah, just a brief moment of silence. Our senior trustee Lucy Massafra lost her father Thursday. And I wanted to extend our deepest sympathies to she and her and her terrific family. So
Mike, can I please add somebody to that before we do the moment of silence? We literally just found this out an hour ago. Sharon Schwartz, a longtime employee at the middle school and high school did attendance. Who just retired this past June, she passed away over the last couple of days. So I'd like her to be in our thoughts and prayers also.
Yeah, absolutely, Anthony. Thank you. It's a very difficult time to have any, you know, any losses in the family right, right at the holidays over here. So, but again, thoughts and prayers to, to, to everyone, just a very tough, very time for those families. So we remember them right now. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Without sounding any further ado, I'd like to introduce our, our superintendent of schools, Mr. Anthony Carlo. And he's got a nice, nice couple of segments to introduce right now. So Anthony, take it away.
Thank you, President Mangan. And I'd like to start off with introducing our athletic director, Mr. Steve Luciano, who will kind of give us a little bit of an overview of our girls soccer season and the winning co-championship of Putnam, Northern Westchester Large Schools. He'll introduce coaches, the team, and then he's got another special presentation to make with regards to a Con Ed assistant, a one winner. So without further ado, Mr. Luciano, I turn it over to you. Thank you.
No, thank you very much for having me and having our girl soccer team a 10 year meeting tonight. To say the least, this fall season had its challenges and I really have to commend all of our athletes and our coaches for the way we were able to get through this season, their hard work. They followed all protocols that were in place. Our athletes were tremendous with their mask wearing and the social distancing. Our parents coming, attending games, going through our check through process, our check in process. Without all of them cooperating, I don't think we have a successful season as we did. So I'd really like to commend all our athletes and the coaches and parents for, for what they did to make sure that we had a safe and successful fall season. Our girls soccer program has really, you know, even though it's my first year, they've really come a long way the last few years. You know, last year shocking Arlington and making the sectional finals. And then this year, you know, losing key girls to quarantine late in the season and making the run they did in the playoffs. You know, in 14 years of being an athletic director, this is one of the most resilient, if not the most resilient team that I've ever seen take a field. Cause they mean, they had their obstacles with injuries from day one and they stuck together as a team. They played as a team, they supported each other and a lot of that has to do with the coaching. Casey Carroll and James Carroll, who this is their second year with the team as head coach and assistant coach. And having a husband and wife work together that closely and to be able to do what they do is tremendous. And, you know, I think the team took their, you know, their lead and followed their path. And you really saw a team this year and it was fun to watch. And for them to, you know, lose the key girls that they lost for the playoffs and to beat an undefeated Yorktown team who was the number one seed. We hung tough, beat them in, we tied the score 1-1 in the second half, and then we won in penalty kicks, which you know, if you're there, it was, I mean, it was unbelievable atmosphere and it was, our girls really hung tough and what they did that night was amazing. And then to come back two days later, shorthanded again to play a really tough Somers team and to play them to a zero, zero tie, the girls left everything they had on the field that day. And it was really impressive to see them, you know, be as resilient as they were, to stick together and to give everything they had. And, you know, I know, you know, coming home with a co-champion isn't as rewarding as being a champion, but they played like champions all season long and very deserving of that award. And I'm extremely proud of every one of them and I'm extremely proud of Coach, both Coach Carrolls, who did an amazing job. And now I'd like to actually ask Coach Carroll, if she could say a few words and introduce the team.
Thank you. I first just want to say thank you to the Board of Ed and Mr. DeCarlo for your support this year and advocating for us to actually have a season. We're really grateful. We know there was a lot of work done behind the scenes and that you guys were major contributors for us being actually able to get back out playing this season and we're really just grateful for all of your efforts. I also want to thank Steve and Lynn. You guys organized us and then reorganized us, then reorganized us, reorganized us again. And probably about, you know, 50 more times just to get us out and playing. And we don't pull any of this off without such like a great support from the athletic department. So I definitely want to thank the two of you as well. And I think Steve did a good, a great recap of our season so far. So the last people I want to thank are definitely the girls. I am just in awe of the resilience that you guys had this year. They were flexible and their positive attitudes to never give up was, I think, the major contributor to us being so successful this year. There was a lot thrown at them and they always kept their heads up and like one of the most hardworking, resilient teams I have ever seen. And I don't think we get to where we were this year, not having the group of girls that we had. You, you've overcome a lot and I don't, you know, you are one of the most deserving teams of the Putnam, Northern Westchester Large School Champions. And you worked really hard to get there. So congratulations. And at this time, I would like to introduce the team. So if you girls want to start, you can introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Juliana Mangione. I'm a freshman and I play center midfield.
Hi, I'm Annie Kehrer. I'm a sophomore and I play defense.
Hi, I'm Piper Clement. I'm a sophomore and I'm a forward.
I'm Jessica Sturvens. I'm a sophomore and I'm a goalkeeper.
I'm Kellyton Pagway. I'm a sophomore and I play center mid.
Hi, I'm Katie Watts. I'm a sophomore and I play defense.
Hi, I'm Sophia Arenas. I'm a junior and I play forward.
Hi, I'm Maddie Nicola. I'm a junior and I play center back.
Hi, I'm Sophia Dupus. I'm a junior and I play forward.
I'm a junior and I play defense.
Hi, I'm Victoria Longo. I'm a junior and I play center mid.
Hi, I'm Jenna Mayer. I'm a junior and I play forward.
Hi, I'm Marissa McCarney. I'm a junior and I play defense.
Hi, I'm Adeline McCrossan. I'm a junior and I'm a goalkeeper.
Hi, I'm Mike Griner. I'm a junior and I play midfield.
Hi, I'm Ashley O'Brien. I'm a junior and I play outside midfield.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Robinson. I'm a junior and I play outside midfield.
Hi, I'm Andrea Setimbrini. I'm a junior and I play defense.
I'm Jamie Woodside. I'm a junior and I play defense.
Hi, I'm Amanda Yuman. I'm a senior and I play center defense.
Hi, I'm Shannon Becker. I'm a senior and I play center mid.
I'm Julia. I'm senior and I play defense.
Hi, I'm Mia Clement. I'm a senior and I play forward.
Hi, I'm Julie McGarney. I'm a senior and I play defense.
Hi, my name's Haley Pereira. I'm a senior and I play center mid.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Ragnelli. I'm a senior and I play outside mid.
And Sophia Curcio could not make it tonight, but she is also a senior and she was another goalkeeper for us. And that is our 2020 girls varsity soccer team. So congratulations, ladies.
Coach Carroll, yeah, Coach Carroll, both Coach Carrolls into the team. I've had the pleasure to watch the girls be playing since I started here, but I was able to be up in Arlington last year and see just the, when we beat Arlington, to be on that field last year was just like one of the most incredible moments and then be able to be there again this year in the stands, probably the only person in the stands because of COVID. And just why, and you said it, the resilience of these young ladies to keep fighting, fighting and fighting. It's a tribute to them, all their dedication to their years of playing soccer, to you as the coaches. And it's, it's just, it's a part of who we are in Mayapac and being that resilience group of young ladies is just a testament to all of you. So on behalf of again, of myself, I know the Board of Education and the entire Mayapac community, you two are so proud. And congratulations, ladies and coaches. Thank you very much for a great season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Luciano, you have another presentation. Back to you.
Thank you. Um, yeah. So this year we had a lot of individual awards and well deserved for this team. They, they were tremendous. And, you know, we had one athlete in particular that was nominated for the ConEd Scholar Athlete of the Week Award. And that award winner was Haley Pereira. And when I was looking for nomination, I've been part of the ConEd Committee for the last three or four years, you know? And I realized what a special award it is and how athletes that win it, how much it means to them. And so when I was going through and saw Haley's grades and her, her, her attitude on the field, her play on the field. I thought she was a no brainer. And when I nominated her, it, it was very special to hear that she won. She is the first Mayapac winner that we've had in years, if not decades. The ConEd, the person that runs ConEd is actually looking back through all the years of winners to see when the last Mayapac winner was. But nobody could even remember the last time Mayapac had a winner. So, so for Haley to be selected by a group of athletic directors for her accomplishments, not only on the field, but in the classroom, shows what kind of a great student athlete she is and very well deserving of this award. And I'm very proud to say that, you know, to see Haley represent Mayapac the way she does. And I know when she goes to Bryant next year, she's going to represent them well. And she has a great career ahead of her, no matter what she does. So just very proud that Haley was able to represent Mayapac and be chosen as a ConEd Scholar Athlete winner.
Thank you so much.
Haley, congratulations. What a, what an absolutely great honor. So well deserved. Congratulations to you, your family. It's a, it's a, it's a real feather in the cap of Mayapac High School. To have somebody that represents the ConEd Award, it's not easy to get. And as Mr. Luciano said, it's a testament to your work ethic, not only on the pitch, as they say, in soccer, but also in the classroom. And congratulations again, on behalf of myself, the Board of Education, the community. We are so proud of you Haley and we want you to do great things when you leave Mayapac High School and go on to college, playing in soccer and then of course in life. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome. Thank you. And Mr. Luciano, thank you for all you do. And, and I know it's not been an easy year. You and Lynn and everybody that's helped out during these games. We thank you for all the work that you've done to, to make this season as successful as possible. So thank you once again.
No, thank you. Thank you for having the team on today and giving them the proper recognition they deserve. And it was a, it was fun to be a part of and fun to watch. So thank you.
Yeah. And what's very important, what's very important to the community, and I'm going to announce this right now, and Steve mentioned it. We, every single team this year was a scholar athletic team in the eyes of New York State for their overall average. That's just a testament. If you think about this, everybody at home and to the board, that's not easy during these difficult times. You know, kids are, have a lot of social emotional stuff going on. Some of them are hybrid, some of them are remote. And it could be easy just to give up and, you know, and not concentrate the way you normally would. And, and these athletes just showed us that, that student athlete part of what Mayapac is all about is so very, very important. So I want to congratulate all our fall athletic teams, the coaches, the players and their parents for their constant fortitude on understanding what a student athlete is and embodying what student athletes are at Mayapac High School. So congratulations to all our teams. What a great honor. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Great job, Steve. Great job.
Okay, I guess I'm up. President Mangan, that leads me to follow the introduction. But before I introduce this young man, was going to give us a little bit of an overview of the Mayapac Environmental Club. He's a very humbled young gentleman, but I think it's important for the community to know and the Board of Education to know that Max Centimgram was, believe it or not, it's an unbelievable accolade, was accepted to Harvard University. He found out last week. What an absolutely incredible honor. Absolutely incredible honor.
Thank you.
You know, you are welcome, Max. So very well deserved, very proud of you and, and very proud of, of your accomplishments. Not just these four years, but through your schooling at Mayapac. And I always say that, you know, the accolades come senior year, but you know, from K to 12, all those teachers along the way and, and coaches and band and orchestra who molded you into what you are. So you do us very proud, young man, and we wish you only the best.
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely couldn't have done it without the support of all the teachers, the administrative staff, coaches, my family. I couldn't have done it without them.
Well, congratulations. So next I'll let you introduce the Mayapac Environmental Club.
Great. So will I be presenting the slides or?
Melody?
Yes.
Okay. Or you want to pull them up?
I gave you the co-hosting ability, you and your team. So
Yeah, yeah, Bert just had it ready, but I can, I can pull it up too.
Okay, this way you can go through it.
Yeah. All right. I'm not very familiar with Zoom, but I think I just clicked share screen and then. Yes. All right. Can you all see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So thank you for giving myself and my fellow officers the opportunity to present about the Mayapac Environmental Club tonight. So I'm the president of the Mayapac Environmental Club.
I'm Bert Mokelbus and I'm the vice president of the Environmental Club.
Hi, I'm Kira Condon. I'm the treasurer of the
So we founded the Mayapac Environmental Club two years ago with the goal of educating the Mayapac High School community about sustainability and to make it more environmentally friendly. Sorry, this thing's in the way. Okay. So we've accomplished this through a variety of ways and beginning from the very start, we had bi-weekly meetings. We brought in guest speakers. We have, we constructed a compost bin and a corresponding food collection service with the, with cafeteria. We had a bake sale, Stop Shop thing, and we also participated in the Thanksgiving food drive last year. And during COVID, we still continue to try to achieve our goal of spreading sustainability with our monthly meetings where we continue to teach the club about sustainability tips. I'll explain further in future slides how we did this. And we also created an Instagram account to make our fellow classmates aware who are not in the club about ways they could be sustainable while they're at home. So at our meetings, when we had them both in prior to COVID and during COVID, we would present sustainability tips that our club members can use in their own lives. We really wanted to make it applicable to them so they can lead a more sustainable life. On this slide, you can see a clip from one of our slides where we talked about how to create a sustainable home garden. And in this picture, it's a, you can, we taught them how they can reuse common house items as plant containers. This is just one of the examples of sustainability tips that we taught them. We taught them about ways they can conserve water, how to recycle, et cetera.
One of the club's first physical initiatives was to construct a compost bin behind Mayapac Middle School. So that the entire body of our club would be able to collect food waste from the cafeteria on a daily basis. Whether it be salad scraps or eggshells, our goal was to bring it behind the middle school so that we could fertilize our school gardens and make our school even a touch more self-sufficient. We also were very lucky to host Ms. Aria Hall, who's a community environmentalist at T-Town. And she was able to teach everyone about sustainability and small ways that we can promote it within our own homes and our communities, whether it be through rain gardens or recycling. And she also educated us more about native and invasive species. So that would be, we would be much more environmentally conscious going forward. Last October, we ran a bake sale outside of the Somers Stop and Shop. Our goal was not only to raise funds, but also to make our club's presence known in the community. Because if we are able to make ourselves known within the community outside the school, hopefully we will be able to help everyone around us become more environmentally conscious. The funds we raised, we hope to use to plant a memorial tree, build a rain garden and purchase funds, purchase prizes, I'm sorry, for Earth Day competition. We also want to set up an online shop going forward. As we continue through the uncertainty that is our pandemic, we have the goal to host an event on Earth Day. And we hope to host more virtual speakers going forward. We have also partnered with our school newspaper to write columns that we'll speak more on later. And we're going to build a rain garden and plant a tree to honor all the healthcare and essential workers who have put their lives on the line every day for us since March. And to set up a memorial for all the people who've lost their lives. We also are going to establish our shop.
Yeah, so for our online shop, we are hoping to sell Environmental Club t-shirts, but we also hope to sell environmentally friendly items that our community can use, such as grocery bags, water bottles and face masks. Then for our Earth Day, we want to host a school-wide competition where our student body can compete doing something environmentally friendly, even if we are remote. And we will judge our competition based off their impact, creativity and time investment. And monetary prizes will go to our top three submissions. And in addition to that, we are hoping to have some guest lectures to speak to our club monthly about specific topics. For example, we have Ms. Lindsay Yoder, the Aquatic Programs Coordinator at T-Town. And she will be speaking to us on January 14th about invasive species. But we also hope to invite even more speakers to talk about topics like climate change, extinction, alternative energy, et cetera. And to engage our student body more, we are partnering with Chieftain to write an environmental column. And this will be written by our club members and officers. And they can choose any topic from environmental news around the world to small things like our student body can be more sustainable.
So that's, that's it for our presentation. If you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask them now. I'll just give a couple of seconds.
Max?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for, for what you, I'm, I'm, I'm really taken aback on what you've been able to accomplish in, in the two years that you started the, that the club's been started. So, you know, just continue to, continue to, you know, to keep up the good work. And, and I know that there are a boatload of projects that are, that are still, you know, out there. This club is going to survive. It's not going to go anywhere. It's going to, to prosper as soon as we emerge from this, from this pandemic. You know, I'm forward to, to a lot more from this club because this is a very, it's a very important topic and it's going to be a very important topic moving forward. As you know, we're, we even have a, we'll be starting our own initiative with, with our environmental contract that is on tonight's, tonight's agenda. So we're, you know, we're, we're two have listened and are moving into a direction where we're incorporating more, you know, more, you know, safe, more safety of resources and looking forward to even growing that a lot more. So thank you, Max, for your efforts and your, and your team right there.
Of course. Yeah. So I just hope that you'll take into consideration, right now we're still a probationary club. So when you, when you're making the decision whether or not to make us an official club, I hope you keep in mind what we've done, what we hope to do. And I look forward to our club becoming an official one. So thank you.
Absolutely, Max. And now, Max, you also have, you also have, you know, quite an undertaking with your, with your studies and but you have something else to share with us this evening. Would you mind, would you mind speaking about, about your next topic?
Of course. So I have a presentation, but I don't, I didn't, I sent it tonight, but I know I, it should be sent a week in advance. I didn't get the presentation until tonight. So am I allowed to present it or should I, I can just talk about it too? I don't necessarily need to present it.
Whatever you're comfortable with, Max.
Okay. So I'll stop sharing this. Okay. I'll, I'll just, I'll just talk about it just for the sake of following procedures. So tonight I'm here to talk to you also about the Students of the Year Program that's run with the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, for those of you who don't know, their mission is to cure leukemia, lymphoma, Hodgkin's disease and melanoma. And to improve the quality of life for their patients and families. This is a mission that really resounds with me because I've had a personal experience with a blood cancer. My brother, he, he developed Hodgkin's lymphoma this senior year of his time at Mayapac High School. He's, he's fine now. Actually, he, he was treated. He's, he's still in treatment, but the cancer is basically gone. So he's okay. But this experience has taught me the importance of like raising money awareness to try to find a cure for these terrible diseases. And I'm sure many of you, many of you have been touched personally by these diseases as well. And this is why the mission of the, rather, this is why what the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society does is really important. And what, what it is that they do is they raise money for research specifically. In fact, they funded 57 of the last 65 FDA approved treatments since 2017. Working with such a company like LLS is amazing in the, or in the Students of the Year Program, which is the Students of the Year Program is a philanthropic leadership development program during which high school students build professional skills such as leadership, marketing and project management in order to raise funds for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The title Students of the Year is awarded to the candidate or co-candates in each community who raises the most funds during the seven week competition from January 21st to March 11th. So what's important to point out is that the title Students of the Year can be awarded to the community as well. This is a community undertaking. All of Mayapac can come together to help raise funds for the Students of the Year Program. As the first candidate from Mayapac, I really hope to make a strong showing in this national program. I'm hoping to raise $50,000. I know that sounds like a lot, a big undertaking, but I think as a community, we can accomplish this goal. I'm already on a student level, I'm working with the, the student government, the National Honor Society and a new club called Mayapac Students Against Cancer. But also on the level of But also on the level of administrative staff and faculty, you guys can make very important contributions to reaching this goal of $50,000. And there's, there's four different levels of commitment to this. You don't have to fully invest in order to help. Any, any little bit of help really goes a long way. So on the first level, you can just spread the word about this program to your contacts and other community members. As the Board of Education and the superintendent, you, you guys have the possibility to send out email blasts to faculty, but even the other people listening to this presentation, you can just talk to family, friends, just let them know about the program. Provide them with the link, which I'll put in the chat after this presentation. Just provide them with that link to my website. The website isn't fully up and running yet, but by January 21st, you can go on that website and you can make a small personal donation. And that's the second level, making a small personal donation. And then on the third level, you can get me in contact with local business owners or employees at larger companies and corporations. And why this is really helpful is I can talk to these companies and local businesses and help them contribute potential sponsorships towards the goal of $50,000. And then at the, at the fourth level, the greatest commitment is joining the fundraising team, which I, I titled it Team Ben in honor of my brother, Max and Mayapac Fight Cancer. So this is a community undertaking. But you can become an active participant in this team to help me reach the goal of 50,000. So I know that might have been a lot of information, but if you guys have any questions about it, what I've said, anything I've said, you can ask now, or you can reach out to me at my email, maxemmerin@icloud.com. I'll also put that in the chat. Or you can reach out to my staff member, devinotul@devinotul@ls.org. I will put that in the chat. So does anyone have any questions at this moment?
Well, Max, it's, it's really an amazing undertaking. And, you know, it just, it just goes to show you again, you know, what, what a, what a Hope Pack student is, is really all about, about, you know, community and about giving back and, and reflecting on, on, on a, on a tragedy. And seemingly, you know, Ben's doing great now. So what we'll do, I think what we'd like to do is we'd like to get the information together and we'll, 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 it's over to our, to our Board of Education members and we'll, and as you said, we'll start, we'll start getting the word out, spreading it out through, throughout our resources and our contacts and our communities. And, you know, hopefully, we'll get to that, to your goal of 50, $50,000. Just, you know, continue to just, you know, keep the faith and, and, and we'll move, and we'll move forward through this pandemic and, and, you know, and start to do really, you know, get back to doing really great things as we, as we've been doing. So I'll direct our, our District Clerk Melody LaRaca to, you know, to get this information and disseminate and get it all, and get it out to, to the people that we know can, you know, can help.
Great. Thank you so much for the support. I do really appreciate it.
Very well, Max. Very proud.
And what I'm putting in the chat right now is that first link is linked to our website. It's not fully up yet, but by January 21st, that's when the competition starts. It's technically a competition because there's people around the country who are trying to raise money. So it starts on the 21st, but you can just save that link. I will, I'll be sending it out everywhere. You'll see it.
I'm sure we'll see it.
Yeah. And then there's my email, and there's my staff mentor email if you want to reach out to any of us. If you're interested in joining the team, or you just have any general questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
That's great. Max, thank you so much. Very much appreciated.
Yep. Thank you for giving the time for me to speak.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Superintendent DeCarlo, I think we're, so we're ready to move on to, and again, thank the Environmental Club and, and Max. We'll go on to communications for the, for comments on the agenda items only. We didn't receive any comments for tonight's agenda items. What I would like to do right now is to, is to move on to our, to our motions for, for some of the reporting that we've, that we've, that we have to do. I have a, so what I'd like to do right now is if I could make a, a motion for the Treasurer's Report for October 2020, can I get a motion to accept? Don't move. Thank you, Ray. Second?
Second.
Second? Okay, Larry, I heard that. Roll call, vote. Melody, could you call out, please? Yes.
Vice President Savino?
Yes.
Trustee Pofaro?
Yes.
Trustee Keen?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Dululo?
Yes.
And Trustee McCracken?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Could I also get a, so I also could get a motion for our warrants for October 2020? Can I get a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ben. Second?
Second.
Second, Ray, thank you. Roll call, vote, please, Melody?
President Morgan?
Yes.
Vice President Savino?
Yes.
Trustee Pofaro?
Yes.
Trustee Keen?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Dululo?
Yes.
And Trustee McCracken?
Aye.
Motion, please, for the, to accept the revenue status and appropriation status of report of October 2020. Motion to, thank you, Dave. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Tanner. Roll call, vote, please.
President Morgan?
Yes.
Vice President Savino?
Yes.
Trustee Pofaro?
Yes.
Trustee Keen?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Dululo?
Yes.
Trustee McCracken?
Aye.
Motion, please, to accept the budget tran, for October 2020. Can I get a motion?
Don't move.
Thank you, Adam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ray and Dave simultaneously. Very good. Roll call, vote, please, Melody?
President Morgan?
Yes.
President Savino, I'm sorry, Vice President Savino?
Yes.
Trustee Pofaro?
Yes.
Trustee Keen?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Dululo?
Yes.
And Trustee McCracken?
Aye.
May I also get a motion now for the work session, accept the work session minutes of, of November 17th, 2020? A motion, please, to accept. Thank you, Ray. Second?
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
President Morgan?
Yes.
Vice President Savino? You can put your hands up.
There you go.
Okay. Trustee Pofaro?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Keen?
Yes.
Trustee Dululo?
Yes.
Trustee McCracken?
Aye.
Thank you. And also, could I get a motion, please, to accept the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of November 19th, 2020? A motion, please, to accept.
So moved.
Thank you, Tanner. Second?
Second.
Larry, thank you. All, excuse me, roll call, vote?
President Morgan?
Yes.
Vice President Savino?
Yes.
Trustee Pofaro?
Yes.
Trustee Keen?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Dululo?
Yes.
And Trustee McCracken?
Aye.
Thank you. Like you right now is I'd like to turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools, Anthony DeCarlo, excuse me, for our superintendent report. Anthony, please.
Thank you, President Morgan. And as you witnessed tonight, you know, one of the charges upon coming in as Superintendent of Schools almost three years ago was bringing back Mayapac High School to a school of excellence. And you can see what has been happening just in the presentations tonight, scholar athletes year after year, merit scholars, kids going to some of the best colleges in the country, rewarded by the state of New York as a reward school. And that's really a tribute to the challenge that has been taken up by this, by the, the staff, the students. I can remember as Max was sitting there his sophomore year, challenging them to do their best each and every day. And we have seen that happen. Mayapac High School has become a school of excellence, and the, and the kids and the staff and the administration are to be commended for their really, really hard work over the last number of years, getting Mayapac to go back to what it used to be. And I'm, I'm so proud of them, I'm proud of the community, I'm proud of the parents, as witnessed by what you're seeing tonight. So I want to commend everybody for the hard work and what they've been doing. Very, very important. Also, next month, I'll be doing the State of the District. Basically, it'll be an overview of where we're at. We'll take a look at our strategic map that we, that board adopted a number of years ago. We're gonna take a look at our, our finances, our budgets, we're gonna take a look at where we're headed, we're gonna speak about the bond project, just so that you know, as an update, our Phase 1 of the bond is up in the state, waiting its approval on our designs. We'll be updating the public once those designs are approved with all the specifics that we need to do. And then hopefully, towards the end of January, we go out for bid on what we call Phase 1. Now, here's a really important piece for the community to understand. When we start this phase, there's gonna be a lot of work that is going to be done this summer at Mayapac High School and the fall, that's work both inside the building and outside the building. Just like when you renovate your home, there will be some disruption. And that disruption, we're gonna try to make it as minimal as possible, but it, it will happen. There will be people that'll be, have to be moved around over the summertime. When we get into the fall, we're gonna work together with our architects and our construction manager to really try to do the best of our ability to try to mitigate some of these disturbances. But we need to be prepared that there are gonna be things happening, and there will be inconveniences and specific things closed as a result of the construction that we're doing. But we're so excited that we're gonna actually be able to put shovels to the ground and begin that work on the capital project. It's here, it's gonna become a reality. As you know, we finished our roofs last summer, this is Phase 1, which will start this summer into the fall, and then we'll have our, our Phase 2 the following summer, that will be a lot of work at the middle school as well as our elementary school. So I just share that with the community. I'll be updating you at the State of the District on January as to where we're at in that process of getting our approvals. Update, testing first, and then I'll get to the vaccine. So as you are aware, you know, New York State has told districts, you know, if you get designated as a zone, meaning orange and a red, you'd have to do testing. I'm happy to say that Putnam County has secured tests for our school districts. It's a working plan in progress that all the districts are working on to assess the testing, what the protocols will be, if we, if we were designated, how we'll set that up, how we'll go about doing it. That's starting to happen and evolve. And as we get to the new year, you'll be getting some more information with regards to what that looks like. And if it does have to happen, how it will happen as we go along. But it's nice to know that we do have access to testing that the county was able to get, and now we're working on the specifics over the next couple of weeks. As far as the vaccine goes, I know there's been a lot of discussion recently locally on a national level. Those discussions are going on. Westchester Medical Center has been designated as our region's hub. They're working with the surrounding Department of Health to talk about how these vaccines will be rolled out. Suffice it to say that it looks like under Phase 2, school district and personnel will get vaccinated because the feeling is that, you know, we want the teachers to be vaccinated as well as our staff and faculty. And so as we get that information and we get certain dates and times and locations, we'll be sharing that with, with the public. But those are really two important updates as we move forward. Some bad news. The state last week issued a memorandum with regards to high-risk sports. Those sports, as you know, are basketball, boys' lacrosse, competitive cheer, football, ice hockey, volleyball, and wrestling. They have been indefinitely put on hold. So as of now, they cannot start in January. Our low-risk sports can start, and will be starting on January 4th. Those low-risk sports are bowling, winter track, skiing, and gymnastics. Should we get updates on the high-risk sports? Of course, we'll share that with the community. I know Mr. Luciano will be getting information out. Here's the issue. This is not about Anthony DeCarlo, Superintendent of Schools. This is not about Steve Luciano, the Athletic Director. You know us, we want to have the sports. It's not our decision. That decision lies with the governor and the state legislators. And I, and I know there's beginning to be a push by some of the, the athletic groups, specifically the ones I mentioned that are high-risk, to start after the holiday, to start lobbying the governor and lobbying the legislators to try to make a decision either way, whether or not these high-risk sports are gonna even have an opportunity to take place this year. So that's, that's the update as that goes right now. It's important, there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes to try to get some answers, either yea or nay with this as we move forward. And last but not least, this is just to the Mayapac community, for myself. It's with great joy that I send you season's greetings. This has been a very difficult year for all of us, as we have, and will continue to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic. Let me say what a privilege it is to work in this wonderful community. I am grateful for your support, collaboration, and patience. I am blessed to work with such outstanding educators who are dedicated to the youth of Mayapac. We should be thankful that we have been permitted to be in the service of others. We experience many joys in our teaching careers, but we also know, especially during these pandemic times, the sorrow and frustration as we become involved in the lives of our students, colleagues, and community. This happens because we care. May the holidays also be a time for relaxation with your family, which is important as we prepare to face the challenges and opportunities that will come with the 2021 New Year. Now is the time to reflect on our blessings and to recharge our spirit with hope and kindness for all. Happy holidays. Thank you, Mr. President.
Amen. And thank you for your perseverance and leadership. What we'd like to do right now is we have, we've been busy with, with our committee reports. So what I'd like to do right now is turn it over to Special Education. We have a report about special education.
Yes, we do. We met on 12/8 of 20 for Special Education Subcommittee. In attendance was Superintendent Greg Stahl, trustee Ben Dululo, myself, and Lawrence Keen. We spoke about the update and the pause in special education, update on PPS budgeting, and what ramifications there would be in elementary schools with the current special education programs. So basically, we all know we had to go on pause right now, so do that. But the good news is, our extensive review on all of these replacements have been sent, review of incoming K students from CPSC have been sent, projections for 2021 school year went out this month to the teachers also. And actually, it looks like we're not gonna have a major impact on adding many classes for next year. I just want to personally thank Greg Stahl and his group for the job they have done. It's been, been amazing, and we do appreciate that. Thank you. President Morgan, back to you.
Thank you. Guys also had, trustee Larry, do we have a report?
We do.
Thank you.
Okay. This is supposed to be the curriculum and counseling, okay? And what has happened is that state has now mandated a counseling advisory council. So what we did is we had the first of two annual meetings of the Mayapac School Counseling Advisory Council on December 16th from 7:00 until 8:30. Present were-
Present were trustees Delulo, McCracken, and myself. Uh, present also were two high school counselors, one clinician from the high school, uh, three teachers, two were from the high school, and one, I believe, was an elementary teacher. There are also two parents present, both of whom were, uh, clinicians outside of the district. Okay, and there are other parents on the committee, and, uh, those parents were not able to make it. That was the night of the storm. Uh, I asked, uh, how these people were chosen, okay? And Dr. Kleinman, who organized the meeting, okay, told us that they're all chosen via a Google survey. All right, uh, some of the things that we discussed, okay, were, uh, the, the New York State Education Department regulations, okay, which has three main points. The academic development of our students, the college and career readiness, okay? And the social emotional development of our students. Uh, Dr. Kleinman and also the counselors gave us an explanation of how they were delivering programming uh, for our students with the remote, you know, condition that we're in. And also, you know, what they would do with a normal. Uh, all of the information about this can be found on the Mamaroneck School District, uh, com- uh, comprehensive, Ma- Maupac School District, okay? Comprehensive K-12 counseling program, which is found on our website. Did I say Mamaroneck in there, but?
Yeah, that's okay.
And I guess that's about it. Okay.
Freudian slip, uh, Larry.
Yeah, well, it's 40 years of saying that, so.
Well, thank you for your, thank you for your report and, uh, and for the committee's, uh, oversight in that, uh, that, in that area. So, uh, well done. Um, so, uh, so trustee Masoff, uh, chairs, uh, both our, uh, our policy and our human resource committee. So what I'll do is I'll give the, um, I'll give both of those, uh, brief updates right now. Uh, so the policy, uh, committee met on, uh, on, on, uh, December 1st. And, um, uh, we had a very, uh, very spirited, uh, very spirited conversation. Uh, present were, um, uh, were attorney, uh, our, our attorney Allison Smith, our district clerk Mel- Melody LaRaca, our superintendent of schools, Mr. DeCarlo, uh, myself, uh, trustee Masoffra and trustee McDonough. Uh, we had a, had an aggressive meeting, uh, uh, for the, uh, for policy. We discussed, uh, uh, again, uh, 1512, the public participation in board meetings, uh, policy 7110 and 5100, uh, student attendance. Uh, we also, uh, we also, um, uh, discussed, uh, policy 1320 nomination, election of board officers, uh, policy 5420, student health services. And, uh, we also, uh, discussed, uh, a policy, uh, that will be required, uh, by SED regarding, uh, uh, data. So, uh, so we'll be seeing, uh, we'll be seeing more of, uh, of those things as we start to continue to develop more of the technology and, uh, and incorporate more technology. You know, more virtual meetings, remote meetings, those types of things, uh, with regards to data privacy. So, um, again, it was a, was an aggressive, uh, aggressive meeting, uh, but, uh, certainly well worth the, well worth the, uh, the time. Quite, quite a learning experience. On, um, on Friday, December 11th, uh, we had our human resources, uh, uh, meeting with assistant superintendent Deborah Logato, uh, with, uh, superintendent DeCarlo, uh, myself, um, trustee Masoffra, and trustee Savino. Uh, you'll see the fruits of that, uh, of that deep dive into the, um, uh, into the human resources on the, on the consent agenda this evening with a number of staff, uh, um, retirements and additions and deletions and so on and so forth that you'll see, uh, within the consent agenda. Again, the idea behind the HR committee is to do just that little deeper dive into, into some of the things that, uh, that, uh, that pose the framework of a, uh, of our human resource department. So, uh, thank everybody for their, uh, participation at the, uh, at the December 11th, um, uh, the December 11th, uh, human resource meeting. Um, I think that, that's it, uh, for our, uh, for our committee reports for this evening. Uh, what I'd like to, what I'd like to do right? I'm sorry, go ahead, Ben. Oh, Ben.
You want to do finance?
Oh, yes, I, I'm very sorry, Ben.
No, that's okay. We don't have to.
Oh, no, no. Oh, no.
Okay, so I'll try to go through this, uh, quickly. So we had a couple of major topics as the one key topic is, is the challenge to our budget. So state aid update was New York State continues to maintain the position of withholding 20% of state aid for all school, school districts. So if you're paying attention to that, you can see that that is a continuing, uh, large, uh, uh, piece of our puzzle. So how, how large? It's about $6 to $7 million. We have in our budget about $32 million, uh, assigned for state aid out of a budget of $125 million. And this is a point of information, just because of the timing actually makes them different. The district budget year is July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. And the community votes, as everybody knows, on the budget in May of 2021. However, the New York State budget is April 1 through March 31st. So we may not get guidance, real specific type of guidance, until sometime in March. And I think that is, is a huge challenge for us in terms of planning. And the budget process, uh, is, is starting to now, is starting, is starting now. Another challenge is the transportation aid, which I think we've talked about in prior meetings. It's been reduced by about a million dollars. A half of, half of that was due to, uh, the, the fact that this, in the, the 2021 spend was a million dollars less than the 1920. And aid is calculated about ha- half of that. And then the other half, the other half a million dollars was due to the, uh, the fact that the state ed, state education department, uh, came out and stated that districts were not going to be, uh, reimbursed, would not receive aid on transportation aid, uh, if they were not transport, not transporting students. Obviously, we're not transporting students between March and June of last year. Uh, so, and we were directed by the governor at that time to pay all district employees through the end of, uh, through the end of the calendar, that, the end of June of 2020. So that's, that's created a challenge. Other items that we talked about with the October treasurer reports, which if you were paying attention just before, there was at least a half a dozen going into a lit- a, 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 basically a granularity of every, I mean, every nickel that's being spent by the, by the district on a monthly basis. So, uh, if you're a finance junkie, you can go in and read those at your leisure. You can see where the money is, is spent. Uh, we also talked about the internal audit, uh, RFP. Um, we were two candidates, and I believe we're going to make a decision. We've made a decision to, uh, pick one, Mel Rocky Smith, which is out of, uh, Melville, New York. And they're going to be handling internal controls and procedures and target a specific area of attention, uh, that's decided at the time of the audit. Uh, and that's, those are the highlights. Thank you, President Morgan.
Great, Ben. Thank you so much. Uh, we really, uh, I tell you, having you, uh, having you there on that, uh, on that committee, heading up that committee, uh, really, uh, really makes us all feel very, uh, makes us all feel very good. And, uh, it's very much appreciated, all the hard work and the effort that goes into it. So thank you very much. Um, okay, so, uh, what we'll do right now is what I'd like to do is make a motion, uh, to accept this evening's consent agenda. Could I get a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ray. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, roll call vote. Melody, please call out.
President Morgan?
Yes.
Vice President Savino?
Yes.
Trustee Profaro?
Yes.
Trustee Keen?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Delulo?
Yes.
Trustee McCracken?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, okay, so what we're going to be doing, we've got some housekeeping, uh, that we're.
President Morgan, can I, just, just because this just came up, uh, and I just want to reiterate it. When I talked about high-risk sports, um, you'll notice girls lacrosse is not considered, boys is. Don't ask me why, but I think that, I just want to clarify that because there seems to be a lot of, uh, responses questioning about that. So high-risk sports is boys lacrosse. It is not girls lacrosse. So thank you, President Morgan, for letting me clarify that.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine. Listen, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not giving up on any of the high-risk sports. I, uh, I think states around have demonstrated that they can be done and be handled in a, uh, in a certain manner. And I've witnessed it for myself. So I'm, I'm, I'm not satisfied. And, uh, and I know that, uh, that we're going to be fighting pretty hard to get these, uh, get these high-risk sports back in, but, and, and done in a safe manner. Uh, and please, I hope the community knows that we're going to be working awful hard to get this done. Um, there's just no reason for it. So, uh, but thank you for, thank you for clarifying that, uh, Mr. DeCarlo. Um, okay, so with that, we're going to move to do some housekeeping on, uh, personal contracts in executive session. So what I'd like to do right now is I'd like to make a motion, uh, to go into executive session.
President Morgan, were there any resident comments for the end of the meeting?
I'm sorry, very, very good. Uh, trustee McCracken, we didn't have any resident comments for this eve- for this evening. That's why I kind of glossed over it. So I apologize. Uh, yeah, we didn't receive any resident comments. Um, but, uh, as, as always, uh, we're certainly, uh, we're certainly open and welcome, uh, to, to, uh, resident comments. So we'll just, you know, we'll make sure that we keep thundering away at that.
Um, not a problem. I'll give you the motion, by the way.
So moved. Thank you very much. Okay, can, can I get a second to go into executive?
Second.
Thank you, Ray. Uh, roll call vote, please. Melody, call it out.
President Morgan?
Yes.
Vice President Savino? You can show your hand if you'd like.
He's frozen.
He's frozen. Okay, I'll come back to, um, I'll come back.
Circle.
Trustee Profaro?
Yes.
Trustee Keen? Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Delulo?
Yes.
Trustee McCracken?
Aye.
Vice President Savino?
I just saw a note where, uh, I got a, an alert that, uh, that he dropped out of the meeting. Um, Melody?
I just got his text. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, so what, so, um, due to the, um, due to the technical limitations, it won't be possible to end the meeting with a virtual public session. Please be advised that the Board of Education will take no action after the executive session and to ask for a second to move from executive session and adjourn the meeting and to ask the members to vote on those motions. A record of the time the motions are made and the result of votes taken will be made by our district clerk and included in the minutes of the meeting. What I'd like to do right now is on behalf of the Board of Education, the Hopec Board of Education, may this holiday season fill your home with joy, your hearts with love, and your life with laughter into a healthy, happy, and peaceful new year. Together, we can all get through this. So, thank you very much and, uh, have a terrific, uh, holiday. Thank you.